Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019. As we enter into winter in Grand Prairie, I would call our meeting to order and ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guards keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, the National Film Board, for the images of our country, and to alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and welcome to Christmas time coming soon. I move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, September 23rd, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Great, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. Pleased to see that we have so many people joining us this afternoon, especially during the workday, and so we will start with our delegation portion of the agenda. We would recognize anybody that wished to come forward. You didn't have to let us know in advance that you wish to be here for this portion, and so we're happy to have anybody come and speak. If you're speaking to an agenda item, please maybe just identify which item it is that you're speaking to, and I would welcome anybody that wished to come forward. Who wants to be first? You don't have to race. Gentlemen, you're no stranger to the delegations. If you'd just introduce yourselves, you're welcome.
Scott Pravitz, and I'm representing the Home Builders Association in Grand Prairie.
Jeremy Walker, and I'm representing UDI Grand Prairie.
Welcome.
So, thank you for allowing us to come here and speak today. We are specifically talking about the Affordable Housing Strategy 2020-2030 August Draft. Is that the right...
That'd be Item 8.1.1?
On the agenda, so...
Got it.
And so specifically, we want to talk about the letter that we sent to Mayor and Council on September 24th. And in that letter, we talk about the Affordable Housing Strategy. And so, I guess first off, we would like to thank administration for their time. We met with them numerous times about going over this document. So, we do thank Reed and his group for that. They've been very forthcoming with the information. And I guess the last meeting that we had with Reed, which was in, I think it was September 9th, so not even a month ago, it was brought to our attention that the strategy would be going to committee October 1st. At that point, a lot of our concerns, we felt, weren't addressed with Reed. And we also felt like there maybe could have been some more consultation between our industry and administration on some of these issues that were not talked about. Obviously, we, as an industry, support the affordable housing needs in the city. I think we can all agree on that. We agree there's a necessity for these types of strategies. In our letter, we wrote to council and mayor. Towards the end, we talked about a couple of the ideas that we had that we could be able to communicate to the city and administration, some viable and proven alternatives to addressing some of the issues with affordable housing, and specifically what is talked about in the strategy. And we were hoping, and we put in that letter, that we were hoping to speak to that at the committee meeting on October 1st, and obviously, we didn't get that opportunity. And so between the last meeting we had with administration and that committee meeting, we were presented with a solution to, or maybe another tool in the toolbox, that could address some of these, some of the issues with affordable housing, and we weren't able to communicate that to anybody. So, we were kind of feel like this might not be the best venue to do that here, to get into specifics and details of that, but we do have some ideas and a solution that we think that would work. So, I guess from CHBA, Grand Prairie, we're hoping that the strategy gets sent back to administration, and I don't know the format that has to happen, but we're hoping that it gets sent back to administration and that we can explore some of the ideas that we had at greater lengths.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Given and council. So, UDI and CHB are very supportive of affordable housing initiatives. This is a sensitive issue that needs to be looked at with great and significant vigor. While it's imperative that the city of Grand Prairie does not compete with private industry, it is equally important that the city of Grand Prairie is fiscally responsible with taxpayers' funds. All potential solutions need to be explored in order to satisfy as much of the housing need as possible with the least ongoing tax burden to our community. The local development housing industry has a lot of experience and expertise to offer in that regard, and we are excited to be a part of the solution. We look forward to that collaborative approach to the affordable housing issue. Again, UDI is very supportive of the affordable housing initiative, but we cannot support the CHC business plan in its current state, nor the strategy as it calls for the creation of the CHC. So, we would like to have a chance to revisit all of that at appropriate and future date. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. That being the case, thanks very much for being here this afternoon. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that wished to come forward during the delegation portion of our agenda? Gentlemen, the great thing about this is that just about everybody that's here knows exactly how the delegation thing works. So, everybody knows to introduce themselves, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Scott Rossler with Yiddish Engineering. I'm here representing as a private consultant for UDI Grand Prairie. With me is Matt Buckta with KCM Commercial. He's representing Canadian Home Builders Association of Grand Prairie as well. So, just a couple of things, just won't beat the same drum that Mr. Pravitz did already, but just to run through a few items and a few issues that we found with this. I did a fairly thorough review. I've been involved in the process since the very, very beginning, and I think I echo Mr. Walker and Mr. Pravitz's comments that industry is very compassionate and caring about the city, and we do a lot of business within this municipality. There's a lot of interest in solving the issues that arise, so the, you know, the opportunity to have a say in this is not taken lightly. It's something that we definitely are compassionate about. Industry definitely wants to be a part of the solution, and as they had stated earlier, unfortunately, we don't feel we're there yet. So, and again, I want to apologize again that we do have to do this at council. We did have a request to do this at committee. We're well aware of the public processes that are in place, and we would have definitely preferred to voice our concerns at that level rather than here, but as you're aware, we had some administrative issues that maybe stood in the way of that, so we'll deal with it here. We do also support the city's initiative to resolve affordable housing. Unfortunately, the proposal that has been put forward, we don't feel is the best solution for the problem. Should be noted that the affordable housing issue, the way that we understand it, is not the same, and we clarified this through our process, but it's not the same as social housing, emergency shelters, or homelessness. There's a separate process kind of being undertaken for that component of things, and it's our understanding that the AHS, the Housing Solution, or Affordable Housing Study and Strategy presented, does not deal with these concerns, and separate initiatives are required for that portion of the housing continuum. So, there are some, there's a lot of documentation in front of you today. The housing strategy has a figure in it that kind of shows that. Figure one, it's on page two of the strategy, I believe, talks about the, those three items that, being emergency shelters and that type of assistance earlier on, and that's part of, I think you have a plan for a five-year plan for homelessness, I believe? That's what it's called? Anyway, so this is, once you're in house, we help it to be affordable, is what my understanding is. So, it is different, so I don't want to confuse the two and have that be the case. The, should also be noted that the first goal of the strategy is to, of the strategy being that there's three, there's three motions, I believe, coming forward today. First is a strategy, second is a business plan, and third is a housing corporation. There was some discussion at one point about potentially being able to support the strategy. I don't think we're in that place anymore. The reason being is that the first goal of the strategy, as you read through it, is to establish a nonprofit housing corporation. So, we kind of lead the way into something that we feel is not the right direction. So, while we certainly support our strategy to, for the city to pursue, when the first goal of that strategy is to create a, what we feel is a very administrative and costly corporation, then we don't want to support that. We do have a lot to offer as far as finding a solution. We're very, very interested in collaborating with the city and administration to find a most cost-effective way to deal with this issue. This is something that is, like I said, is very, very important to not only our industry, but we feel like to our community, to our, to the taxpayers, to the people that are in need in this situation, and we feel it's onerous on us to ensure that we take the, whether it's public funding, tax dollars, industry support, anything that we can do to help. We want it to be the most cost-effective way that that's possible, meaning we want to reach as many people as we can with any of the dollars that are placed towards this. We would love to collaborate with the city and administration to find that solution. This may, or maybe should have already included, the formation of a board or some sort of a committee and stakeholders and interested parties. So, at the end of the day, this just feels a little bit rushed, and we're interested in helping in the solution. Current plan will propose as well in excess of half a million dollars per year of tax dollars and administrative costs that currently don't get directed towards the solution and the people that need it. So, that is, that's our position. We do have other solutions. Again, we don't want to get into them at this point, but they include significantly less costs and benefits such as, I'll give you a kind of a list of the things that we came up with, but the solutions that we would have to present to the city would be immediately deployable discounted rents that would be available to those in need, immediately available sites for projects such as these, dispersion of units across the city, avoiding the creation of what we call like low-income precincts, an increase in tax revenue for the city of Grand Prairie, a significant decrease in operational costs in comparison to what's in front of you today, and ultimate flexibility to adapt to a volatile Grand Prairie economy. Meaning, when, once a need has been met, we'd be able to adapt to that and adjust accordingly. So, we do want to find the best solution to this problem before we commit significant ongoing tax dollars towards the presented proposal, and the proposal from the city currently commits long-term at high cost to taxpayers and industry would like to have a say in a more collaborative and cost-effective approach.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Rossler. Mr. Buckta?
Yeah, I don't think I have much more to add than that. You did a really good job of that.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any questions for the delegation? Council, any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody in the queue. Then, thanks very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Anybody else that wished to come forward? This will be the last opportunity to speak to this agenda item before council deals with it later on in our committee business and reports. Anybody else that wishes to speak to this item or any other community issue? This delegation portion is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, and an opportunity for anybody that wishes to come forward. And we have one more delegation. Welcome.
My name's Angie Peters. I've been involved in affordable housing and dealing with homelessness for quite some time at the, at various levels. I commend the work that Reed has done to put together a next phase on affordable housing I do believe that we need to set up some sort of structure that is not city council, perhaps, well, for sure, this housing corporation or housing company, right? If it's something that does not sit well with builders and business people in our city, then it's not ready to launch yet. I believe that, obviously, there are some good conversations that can still happen. Maybe they need to happen in a different format to pull people together to find the solution. I think that somehow, city administration in cooperation with people in the community should be able to find some sort of a balance where it's not city council or city processes applying for grants and funding, because I understand that to be too cumbersome. Otherwise, we would have built some projects in the last 10 or 15 years, more than what we have now. However, the, what's being presented, obviously, is not going to have the support from the community, so I hope that with continued conversation happening very soon, that we're able to find some sort of a solution.
Great. Thanks very much, Ms. Peters. Any questions? She's not even willing to take questions. No. She's just out of there. No. I don't see anybody with any questions anyways. Angie, I think you're off the hook. Was there anybody else that wished to make a presentation? I don't see anybody coming forward, and so appreciate everybody that did make time out of their day to come this afternoon, and then we'll close our delegation portion of our agenda. We have no items of unfinished business, and so we can go directly into reports. And Item 7.1, councillor extended leave of absence. Council, you'll see a recommendation, as we had discussed previously, for an extended leave of absence for councillor Blackburn from September 30th to January 1st, as he undergoes his next phase of cancer treatment. I would look for a motion or a discussion on that. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council approve an extended leave of absence for councillor Blackburn from September 30th, 2019, to January 1st, 2020.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. This, of course, is a requirement under the MGA. Should council member miss more than four consecutive council meetings, past experience showed us that councillor Blackburn actually returned earlier than he had expected. That may or may not be the case here, but he would have the opportunity during this time to dial in for a council meeting, a single item on a council agenda, as is allowed under our procedure bylaw if he chose to. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and that'll take us to 7.2, the procedure bylaw. I would look for a motion for first reading, and then we'd go to administration for an introduction. Can I get a motion for first reading? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1299, being the procedure bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. So, I'll look for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I will look to the city clerk for a bit of an introduction to the procedure bylaw.
The city's current procedure bylaw was passed in 1995, and over the past 24 years, has undergone several amendments, but has not received a complete review by council. The proposed bylaw presented today reflects current practices used to set rules, establish the rules and functions of council and standing committees, and align powers and duties with current legislation, including the Municipal Government Act, the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, and the city administration bylaw. Specifically, the proposed bylaw includes updated provisions as follows. Under Section 2.6, this section provides clarity on non-suspendable rules by providing references to legislation where applicable. Under Sections 4.18 to 4.27, these provide for the use and authority of a council committee of the whole, as our council currently uses this process. Under Sections 6.1 to 6.5, these outline the process for submitting and approving agenda items by our corporate leadership team and the city clerk, and the respective deadline requirements for adding items. Under Sections 7.25 to 7.30, processes required for public members who wish to address council or standing committee are addressed under these sections. Under Section 9.7, this provides for the use of a friendly amendment to make minor changes to a motion put to an assembly with the general consent of the assembly. The proposed bylaw no longer contains the provision requiring unanimous consent to pass or written notice of motion to bring this bylaw before council. It's the current practice for administration to bring reports to the appropriate standing committee on any proposed bylaw or bylaw amendment that does not require a public hearing, and for committee to discuss and debate the merits for recommending action to be taken by council. In Schedule A, Orders of the Day, the changes reflect the current procedure used to conduct council meetings with a start time of 3:00, and open delegation portion of the meeting to occur at the 3:00 afternoon session, and a scheduled delegation portion of the meeting to occur after 6:00. Under Schedule B, Standing Committee Structure, this now includes four standing committees to align with our current service areas, and they are established in alphabetical order outlining the duties and responsibilities for each. And then finally, under Schedule D, this is a new schedule, which provides secondary motions information as a reference guide for the most commonly used motions by council. So, this bylaw encompasses the current practices used by the city and our elected officials, and aligns with the legislative requirements of the MGA. Administration recommends council give three readings to bylaw C-1299, being the city of Grand Prairie's administration bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much. So, that we have a motion for first reading. Is there any questions for administration at this time? Councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate it. I'm just kind of curious. I'm very aware that our organizational meeting is for our next council meeting, and I'm also hesitant about passing this bylaw today. I'm wondering if there's any particular urgency to get this passed before our organizational meeting, or if council decided to take its time to do this and not pass this today, if there's any risks we might be exposing ourselves to by slowing down this process?
Ms. Karwoszuski?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, the current procedure bylaw we currently have in place establishes three standing committees, and at our organizational meeting of council, we will be required to appoint members to those committees. If, in fact, we want to align with our four standing committees, we would need a new procedure bylaw or an amendment to it to allow the appointment of members to that, to the standing committees that currently exist.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for administration? Councillor Plott?
Thanks, everyone. I think when we first started on this path, part of it was, I think, hopefully streamline some of the meetings. I'm just wondering if administrations had a time, a chance, to see if there was a lot of hours saved with administration time, putting the meetings together like it is, or if, you know, over that course of time, or if there was enough time to realize there was a savings in administration's time, and that's why we're recommending that or not? That's what we're at on that.
Sure. So, is there anybody from administration that would care to take that? I'm not sure if that'd be the city manager or the city clerk. City manager, Galante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk's office, I believe, is tracking the attendance, motions, and times compared with the previous system. So, we will be able to, we have been compiling this for the last few months, I believe, since March or so, so we can produce a report about the differential between the previous system and this system that has been a pilot until October. So, decision time now is to continue with this system or to revert to the old one, but we can prepare a quick report and circulate that to council.
Councillor Plott?
Thanks. Just one other one, and more, just like a conversation that was had here last week in council chambers, and unfortunately, with Mr. Blackburn not being here, one of his concerns, I guess, was about the format with us putting this, that in essence, what's ended up happening now, it seems like, is they've become a committee of the whole when we put all the corporate services and everything together, and I'm just wondering if there's going to be any differential on that. I guess his concern was if we're going to have appointees to these committee and all of councils there, then why we're not just making them a committee of the whole meeting? So, maybe, I'm not sure if somebody in administration can speak to that.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The intent is to have four separated committee chairs appointed by the mayor. However, the sequence will be in order, is presented in alphabetical order right now on paper, but then will be at the discretion of council to rearrange. Currently, we follow, I believe, the sequences, infrastructure and economic development go first, then is protective services, then is corporate services, and finally is community But in that order, can be, that would be the sequence that can be applied, although on paper now, the bylaw is on alphabetical order. So, will be four chairs designated. So, it's not a committee of the whole system, because only the members appointed to each committee will be able to vote on each side. However, has proven the, you know, of value to have all council attending, so they can hear the conversation and be informed at the same time. That results in significant saves in time for, not only for council members, but also for administration.
Thanks, Mr. Galante. Any other questions or discussion before we move on to call for second reading? Any amendments? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'd look for a second reading. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1299.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Open for discussion and debate. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm actually going to try kind of an unusual motion, so if I get ruled out of order, I'll understand, but I suspect that there's actually quite a bit of discussion that has to happen on this item, and I also suspect that most of our gallery doesn't find procedure bylaws as fun and as exciting as I do. So, I'm going to move that we postpone discussion of this item until committee business is concluded.
Okay. So, a motion to postpone. Is there any discussion or debate on that point? So, postpone till later on in this afternoon's agenda. Yep. Okay. I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote on the motion to postpone. Thank you. That motion carries, so we'll postpone consideration of that item until later on in our agenda, and Councillor Bressi can make all the amendment motions he wants to at that time. So, we will move on to our committee business, starting with Item 8.1, and Councillor Clayton. So we will move on to our committee business, starting with item 8.1, and Council Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 1st, as presented.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Council Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. As you'll see in the package, there is two recommendations there. However, I have a motion prior to the recommendations that I'd like to present. I would move that the, that council approve to move the Affordable Housing Strategy to a council committee of the whole meeting. It be revisited and explored at that committee meeting, and that the meeting should include industry and stakeholder, industry and community stakeholders. As we've heard today, the industry feels, the housing and, and development industry feel that the process, although consultative in, in, in process, wasn't consultative in what came out in regards to the document, I think that all of council agrees that Affordable Housing Strategy is a priority. However, I don't think that all of council agrees to what that definition is or what that looks like. Affordable housing means different things to different people, and as a council, I don't know if we've had this discussion as a whole and/or with industry. So I would hope that as a result of this process, that we would come to a more full understanding, and then determine the needs and expected goals as an outcome. So the motion being that this document be moved to a CCW at a further date. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks, Council Clayton. So the motion is to refer that CCW with an opportunity for its community stakeholders to present. Obviously, they wouldn't be a part of council committee of the whole, they would have an opportunity to present at it. And is that intended to apply to both of the recommendations that are in the package? Second, okay, okay, sure. So a motion to refer the endorsement of the Affordable Housing Strategy to a council committee of the whole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Thank you. Council Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. The motion being that council endorse the proposed draft Grand Prairie Community Housing Company Business Plan. As I can't speak against this motion, the motion is there as presented, I will encourage other councillors to put in their comments, and we will go from there.
Sure, so you would like to request another council make, council member make the motion?
Yes, please.
Sure, is there somebody else that would care to make the motion coming from committee?
And assuming that he makes the motion, guys, right?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I guess I'm going to try my own motion here, since we're using our procedure by law like en masse for postponing and referring to other dates. I, I would move that council move the discussion to endorse the proposed draft of the Grand Prairie Community Housing Company Business Plan to the same council committee of the whole. In speaking to this motion, I am in support of the draft of the Grand Prairie Community Housing Corporation, but I do think that there is a lot more consultation that needs to occur with industry, as well as with our administration, and I think if we're going to endorse a plan and build a new company, all of councils should, or most of councils should feel okay with the plan that's being presented. And I think they're, they're inclusive of each other. The draft strategy, or the Affordable Housing Strategy, says that we should, as one of our tools in the toolbox, create a municipal housing corporation to make more accessible, affordable housing for our people, and if we're going to have this discussion later with industry, I think we should keep it all as a whole, so that's my motion.
So it's motion to refer then to that same council committee of the whole?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks very much. So a motion to refer, as with Council Clayton's motion, open for discussion and debate, and discussion or debate on Council Thiessen's motion to refer this item. Council Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would encourage that council defeat this motion. My concern being that until we have the housing strategy and in place, there's potentially not even a need for a business plan. If council doesn't have the intent to have a business plan, currently, we passed a motion at committee level that we put money, send money to budget deliberations for administration to sort of include that in budget deliberations. If the business plan isn't approved, there's no need for money to be put to budget deliberations. And so at this time, I, I feel there's no need for a business plan. Let's get the housing strategy completed, and at that time, we can determine what the needs are in regards to a business plan. So at this point, I would encourage council not to support the, the moving of a discussion of the business plan.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll, I'll echo Council Clayton's comments as well. I think, you know, I, I have an appetite to see us do something with a strategy. The more I've looked at this and I've been, and thought about it, the less appetite I have to have a housing corp to look after that strategy. I think that there's other opportunities we could be looking at, and in, in respect of administration's time of preparing things, and our council's time to be able to have that conversation, I'd rather have the conversation be really spearheaded towards this strategy. And I'm not saying that out of the strategy, some point down the road, we start talking about a housing corp again, but I, I think we need to deal with the one before we deal with the other one, and I think that's part of the problem we've got in this, is we're trying to do this all concurrently, and I think we need to break these open buckets. And so I, I wouldn't be able to support Council Thiessen's motions as much, and I appreciate what his intent is.
Thanks, Council Plott. I see a couple others in the queue. I'll just say that I support the motion to refer. I think the fact that this is an item in the Affordable Housing Strategy identifies that those things are somewhat attached. I wouldn't say that we couldn't have an Affordable Housing Strategy without a corporation, but I think consideration of the business plan, if there are specifics around the business plan that are challenges for people, then we should have an opportunity and venue to speak about that. And if we're going to have all the experts in the room anyways for that council committee of the whole, I think that'd be an appropriate venue to speak about it, so I certainly will support the motion to refer. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd really encourage council to support this motion, and the reason is, I've, I've got big concerns about the business plan as presented, and I think that if, if the motion was to endorse a business plan, I definitely wouldn't be voting in favor of this, but to refer to committee, I think that there's big changes and fundamental changes of like seedmates to this business plan. At the same time, I really appreciate the work that went into it, because it gives us a place to start, and it gives us a chance to say, here are the things I like out of it, here are the things, here are the things where I'm not so sure on, and here's why. And I think that in the strategy, most of the strategy is actually pretty, is very uncontroversial, and I think we're going to be aligned on votes in the strategy. This, I think, is going to be the big hitching point. The one line that says forming a housing corporation, I think, is going to be the biggest discussion we have at that council committee of the whole, and I have troubles picturing how we even have that conversation, we don't have something specific to start from. So as much as this business plan, I think, needs work, at least as a starting point, and I think it's a very worthwhile starting point. So I'd encourage council to vote yes for this motion to refer.
Thanks, Council Bressi. Council Thiessen, I see you in the queue, but I've got a couple of others here, and maybe I'll come back to you to close, okay? Councilor O'Till.
Sorry, I won't be supporting this either. I'm looking at the future here in the province of Alberta. We've got a budget that's coming in from our governing, and also the federal government has got some highlights that they wanted to propose when they, whoever it is, they've all mentioned affordable and supportive housing, and I would like to see what, what comes out of the election and what happens to come out of the budget before I endorse any draft for the City of Grand Prairie. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Council O'Till. Councilor Friesen.
Thank you. I will be supporting this motion. I think that once we get to sit down and speak together about this strategy, it's possible that we all suddenly agree that having a housing company is, is the right way to go, and it would be a shame if we didn't then have that there to discuss. It may take just a few tweaks for us to all be satisfied with it, or it may be something that subsequently we can, we can either send back or, or defeat, but to not have it with us on the day when we're discussing the strategy, I, I think would be a bit of a mistake at this point. A lot of work has gone into it, it is an excellent document, whether or not we come to agree with it remains to be seen, but I think we need to have it with us that day, so I will support the motion to bring it forward to the same meeting.
Thanks, Council Friesen. Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I appreciate sentiment of the people around the table that support this motion. However, I remind you that a business plan, if you look in the definition, is a detailed plan for setting up or developing a business, especially in consideration of financial needs. In my opinion, we're not going to get in, we shouldn't be in this business, we don't want to get in this business. To put forward a business plan discussion at a council committee of the whole has intent that we're going to build a business that is a housing company. I think that council has to understand that there's no need for a housing company. We need a housing strategy, absolutely. Let's implement our needs, let's determine our needs, let's agree on a definition of what the housing needs are, but to set up a business, to get into a housing company, is not my intent, and I encourage you to defeat this motion.
Thanks, Council Clayton. I see then nobody else in the queue. Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given, and just to kind of echo that again, I was, you know, Council Bressi almost had me swayed there for a minute, but I, but I think the thing for me is, I want that conversation to be about the strategy. I don't want us to have a conversation of committee of the whole, where we start talking about a business plan. I have no problems if out of that strategy, we say down the road, we should develop a business plan, but right now, I don't want that, next, I would like to see us get a strategy, and I'm really worried if we sit there and we start deliberating about a strategy and a housing corp, and how it's going to work, we're going to extend the strategies of happening, because we're going to get hung up on the business plan. And I don't want us to get hung up on the business plan, I want us to get dealing with the strategy. And the business plan will come, if we really feel we need the plan, the business corp after we're talking about strategy, then we can do it. But I think of us spending all that time in it with our administration and industry, who's here to, that, you know, when they're talking about it, I don't, they didn't talk, I guess, I won't put words in mouth, but let's deal with the strategy. These are two different things, and if we try to put them together, as much as it might be nice to think we're all in the same room, we're going to lose sight on what the strategy is and get mixed up in the weeds about the business component of it. So let's just concentrate on the strategy at this point, so again, appreciate the intent, I just can support it.
Thanks, Council Plott. I'll just enter one more time to say I would encourage council to support this going to that committee of the whole, so it can be reviewed in context. We did hear specific comments from our presentations today about some of the details in the business plan and the administrative burden that's there, and if industry or anybody else has alternatives, then we need to have an opportunity to just consider those, and again, consider those in context of the larger overall plan. If people are fundamentally opposed to the concept of the housing corporation, in spite of the fact that it has been in front of council a number of times, the overall concept, but if people are opposed to that, then certainly they would have an ability to reject it at that council committee of the whole, or reject it at any other subsequent time. But for those council members that wish to review it in context to see if there is something useful there, then it would be worthwhile to have it go to that council committee of the whole, so it can be reviewed, and if it is rejected at that time, well, then that's fine. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll go to Council Thiessen to close.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and it's been great to hear the different perspectives on this topic. Just to close, I'd, just like, hopefully to maybe shift some of the thinking and maybe echo the mayor's sentiments, this isn't an all-inclusive thing, but it's all included in the current Affordable Housing Strategy Plan. I don't see how we can debate about the Affordable Housing Strategy Plan when it has as one of its options to include a municipal housing corporation, which was also an option in our previous Affordable Housing Strategy that we never actually implemented. We can remove it at that time, and we can continue the discussion at a different time as well. It's reasonable to have the conversation, and I think it's, it's respectful and responsible to bring industry to the table and have that conversation with them at the same time. The truth of the matter is, is we need to do something in our community and quite literally across the country about the issues that are facing housing homelessness and affordability, especially in our community, because those issues are facing us now. If we're going to part and parcel this and remove things, and then we don't have to have that discussion at the council committee of the whole, I mean, I guess that's our will to do today, but I would really like to have that whole conversation, and if it needs to be pared out after the council committee of the whole, then we pare it out, and we remove it, and we do that responsibly and respectfully. Silencing the conversation is not the right way to go, especially in our line of work, and I think it's, it would be unjust to our administration, who's put in hard work and time into this, and also all of industry that sits back here that may be opposing the, the creation of a municipal housing corporation and its business plan in its whole as part of our Affordable Housing Strategy, but I don't want to waste their time either just by killing it. I want to hear what they have to say, I want to have that discussion with them, I want to hear the pros and the cons of it all, and I don't think we shut it down today. So I, I'm just going to ask nicely, please support this motion.
Thanks, Council Thiessen. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and that was our close, so I'll call for the vote on the motion to refer this item to the council committee of the whole. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry on a tied vote, so the referral motion has failed, and so we can either have a motion on the recommendation as it came forward from council, or any other motions, or even to receive for information. Council Clayton.
So I would move that council receive the Grand Prairie, the draft Grand Prairie Community Housing Company Business Plan for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I do want to say that I, I really want to thank Grayden and his team for this. I know there's been a lot of work, there's some great data, there's some great goals. This definitely isn't a throwaway document, even in the present state. Obviously, it's got industry here, it's got us all talking about it, and I think that's great, and I, and I do think there's been a lot of great work. There's, there's a lot of stuff that I have no doubt will come out of this strategy that will be implemented and will happen, so I really want to thank you for what, the work you've done on this. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Council Plott. Any other discussion or debate on the motion to receive for information? Council O'Till.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Plott had said. I do think that there's a lot of great information, and I think we all, as council, I'm going to not put any words in anyone's mouth, but I think we need, and we've talked about this, to solve a problem in Grand Prairie, what that process is and what the timelines are. I'd like to get it done sooner than later as well, but I want to know all the information, and I'm looking forward to bringing this proposed document back and discussing it even further. Thank you.
Thanks, Council O'Till. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll go to Council Clayton to close.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just echoing the sentiment for administration, I agree, there's a lot of great information in this document. It was a very informative piece, and it was useful, and I think it'll still be useful going forward in the strategy. The strategy that we'll do as a council committee of the whole will take us to the next steps of determining the housing needs, and in turn, maybe it's not right now for a business plan, maybe it's in the future. I appreciate, though, the work that was put into it, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, I wanted, I just don't know if it's just a housekeeping item, or if we need to make a motion on this, but I just wanted to, so that in regards to budget deliberations, that the motion that was passed at committee to send potential funding for the business plan to budget deliberations, do you want a motion to remove that funding, or are we good as, as is?
I think the motion has been made at the committee. Administration, I think council actually does already have additional funding in the budget from last budget. I see Mr. Manuel, though. Mr. Manuel, you have to get your microphone.
I believe it was actually our intent to have council refer it as opposed to, to committee, but I, I think we're content either way.
Okay, okay, so seeing nothing else from that committee then?
Can I just provide that there was a few other?
Sure, Council Clayton, if you had more to say?
Thank you. Just a couple other items that were discussed at IPS that day. Planning and Development told a public, held a public engagement for the College Park ARP on September 17th at Musca CPE Pavilion. As somebody who lives in College Park, I attended it, and, and I was happy to see that numerous residents were there, providing information as well. I wanted to thank administration providing an online option for this survey, so I think that that was a useful engagement of the community and, and the residents and business owners in College Park. There is, for those of you who aren't aware, Transportation Department has now taken possession of the former bypass, and you probably have noticed that city staff has been hard at work, doing patching and line painting and concrete repairs, and, and the bypass has never looked greater, so thank you for that, for administration as well. There is still some overlay and, and paving that's being worked on. I think we're coming close to an end, hopefully the snow is only a one-day thing, and we can complete our projects as, as they're started, and for now, I think that's it for my report.
Yeah, that's Council Clayton. We'll move on to Corporate Services Committee. Council O'Till.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Corporate Services
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October first, twenty nineteen as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Oh, I've got a bunch of stuff here to talk about. You're gonna want to fill my water glass in a minute or two. Under uh, Bylaw C dash thirteen ninety-two, Grand Prairie Airport Business Operating and Parking Bylaw, the recommendation is council give first reading of Bylaw C dash thirteen ninety-two being the Grand Prairie Airport Business Operating and Parking Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole?
Uh, move that we give second reading to Bylaw C thirteen ninety-two.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the Airport Business Operating and Parking Bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole?
And I'd move to have third reading of Bylaw C thirteen ninety-two at this meeting.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. So this is a motion to have third and final reading at this meeting. Uh, in order for us to move on to that third reading, it must, this motion must carry unanimously. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously, so Counsel O'Toole, we can carry on.
Woo-hoo. Uh, move that we give third reading to Bylaw C thirteen ninety-two being the Grand Prairie Airport Business Operating and Parking Bylaw.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. I think there's just one that hasn't stuck. Counsel, make sure your vote's stuck. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, keep going.
We're down to uh, item eight point two point two, Bylaw C thirteen seventy-four, the subdivision and development appeal board bylaw.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. That's motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counsel O'Toole, carry on.
I'd like to move that we give second reading to Bylaw thirteen seventy-four.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. This is a motion for second reading, an opportunity for any discussion, debate, amendments, uh, or motions. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna try an amendment that was made and failed at committee, but maybe council will be open to it. And that is I would move that under section eight point one, uh, we add in that an appellant shall have their fee refunded if the board finds in their favor. And the idea of this is that if you file a subdivision development appeal board appeal, there's a lot of time and a lot of energy that goes into putting that appeal forward. There's also a fee you have to pay. And that fee is to cover the mandatory advertising costs the city has. We need to advertise as a paper. We need to do a few other things, let the community know what's going on. And so in the past, we've decided that the person who's filing the appeal should carry that fee. Um, I personally feel that if somebody wins an appeal, that the subdivision development appeal board has found that in some way the city's processes were in error. Either they've had a land use bylaw that maybe wasn't as clean as it should be, or it was interpreted in some way. And I feel if the board's saying that in some way our process was an error, that the city should eat the, should eat all the costs. We shouldn't ask the applicant to eat those costs. Just to, one thing to speak to this is, I want to note that a lot of the times at the S D A B, we're not having big companies or very well-off individuals come speak to us. Quite often, it's a pretty average Joe from the city who's got limited beans and is making an appeal in hopes of getting full enjoyment out of the single residential property that they own. And that's somebody where I think it's a big intimidating process for them. I think it's a very big burden to go through the time and energy and I think they'd feel a lot better about it if they didn't have to pay three hundred fifty dollars at the end of the day. So thirty fifty bucks, I get that that's a lost cost we'll have due to advertising, but I feel in terms of the goodwill, it will, it will help us maintain with these residents who feel that we are in some way. I think it's worth it. So I hope council will support this amendment.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Counsel Platt?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I appreciate that as the one that got beat up at committee trying to get that through, so I thanks for bringing it back to life here a little bit, but um, I, I, I really agree with that. I think if, if we've done something wrong in our process or something, I don't think it's necessarily the person's responsibility to pay for it. I can appreciate it. It's a cost to the city. And there is a cost to us whether we win or lose. I don't think there's a whole bunch of these here. I just, it's the message we send, I guess. To me, this is a customer service thing. If somebody's taken the time and wrote a check to do it and they found out that they weren't wrong, I don't know why we made them pay for it. I think we want the community to be involved with decisions. I think we want that. And so I think charging them out even when they win is kind of discouraging them from being uh, from being transparent and open and wanting to come in and be involved with that kind of stuff. And so I, I would encourage us to, to support this. I'm hoping this isn't gonna be a big financial burden to the city. I don't imagine it's going to be. But I do think that it's important that the community gets uh, you know, that it isn't able to hold a pocket expense for somebody. As, as Counsel Bressi mentioned, these are usually, I'm, from what I understand, these aren't usually uh, big corporations that are coming in on this case, so.
Yep, thanks, Counsel Platt. Uh, Counsel Bressi, did you make a specific amendment? You said you wanted to, but I don't think you actually did. Did you amend?
Sorry, I think I moved that um, that section eight point one be updated to say that the appellate's fee will be uh, refunded if the subdivision development appeal board finds in their favor.
Thanks very much. I was just looking for clarification. If you gave us this section and if you did, thank you. Um, thank you for doing it there. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, so we can move on to second reading as amended. Any other discussion or debate on second reading with that amendment? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we have third reading uh, of Bylaw C dash thirteen seventy-four at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So that's a motion to have. Must pass unanimously, otherwise it would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give third reading to Bylaw C thirteen seventy-four being a subdivision and development appeal board bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Uh, any discussion or debate on third and final reading uh, as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, keep going.
Okay, eight point two point three is the shallow gas tax relief initiative. And I move the council approve the precedent uh, to section two forty-seven of the Municipal Government Act for all properties identified in the appendix. Summary of property tax relief by company, council authorizes the cancellation and or refund of the twenty nineteen property taxes paid or owing as to reduce the thirty-five percent property taxes requisitions detailed in sections three twenty-six, one and A, and three five nine, one and two, as well as special taxes levied taxes levied under the section three eight two one, where the tax rate is based on assessment. And two, cancellation and or refund of penalty, tax penalties associated with the twenty nineteen property taxes levied as per section three five three two of the Municipal Government Act.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? I would note and reflect uh, for council that this was a specific request from the provincial government uh, who has sought to give shallow gas tax operators uh, property tax relief. Uh, their method of doing that in the twenty nineteen year was basically to request that municipalities uh, uh, cancel or lower the property taxes as envisioned in this motion. Um, and the provincial government, I believe, has suggested that they would uh, essentially balance that off by not requisitioning as much education property tax from municipalities. Um, the total cost to the city of Grand Prairie, I think, is somewhere in the order of magnitude of about fourteen hundred dollars. Um, so obviously not a, a significant um, issue for us, where it may be for other municipalities, particularly in the southeast part of Alberta. Um, but just thought that was important context if council didn't actually see the uh, letter of request from the provincial government in the details. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Well, I will highlight a few items. Uh, we, we had an in-camera uh, at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, also, we had uh, Director Services area update. Uh, once again, assessment and taxation is an ongoing process. It's not just at the fall, so there's uh, lots going on there. Corporate facility management, once again. The transit solar project has been completed. Preparations are underway for the demolition of the former school board building. And salvageable assets not to be utilized by the city will be going on gov deals. We've been using them quite a bit over the last little while. And administration successfully hosted the second annual Alberta Municipal Facility Management Conference here in Grand Prairie. Uh, under finance, August and uh, variances are being presented to C L T this week. Administration is working with the twenty twenty-three budget and audit planning meetings with uh, our accountants are upcoming. Uh, I T, administration attended an agenda management software demonstrations at the county as part of our discovery for future city project to replace the program that we have. And uh, yeah. Procurement administration is preparing for the transition of an e-procurement. Support is ongoing in department requests for year-end procurements. Planning for vendor information sessions is underway. We dealt with the bylaws, which we uh, dealt with here today. And I just want to thank uh, our city clerk and the administration in the Corporate Services Department for doing a fine job. There's lots of stuff that they're doing and I commend their help going through the bylaws and finding where we need to make the changes and uh, keep them current. So thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Move on to eight point three, Community Living Committee. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, October first, twenty nineteen as presented.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? And seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, well, just one piece of business coming out of uh, Community Living Committee meeting and that is a land acknowledgement policy and a couple motions, so I'm gonna break it up into two separate motions, uh, but all for the same ends. And so the first motion, I would move that council approve the proposed advancement of this project by authorizing administration to secure the service of a consultant experience in indigenous land teachings to assist in further developing the framework in which to implement a land acknowledgement policy and associated administrative procedure. Uh, just uh, for any council members who weren't there that day, uh, I know uh, it sounds like we're spending some more money on a consultant, but uh, we were assured by our chief of staff Shane Burke that this would be a low-cost consultation. Uh, and uh, that all council would be involved in understanding the teachings that we can all learn, so that uh, perhaps we don't step on the toes of of ourselves or, or indigenous uh, First Nations people who originally inhabited this land and give them the proper respect they deserve.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. And I'm just looking at Mr. Bork. I believe we had a discussion at committee about identifying an appropriate funding source. I know that there was some discussion with the mayor's office about uh, availability within council's budget. Mr. Bork, do you have information on that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, yes, we have had a discussion with the mayor's office and we have identified a source of uh, previously um, budgeted money that won't be spent for that, that need. So this isn't new money. This will be uh, a line item in council's current budget we'll be using.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks for that, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, any other discussion or debate on the motion? Not seeing anyone in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson?
All right, so this is more of a, along the lines, but I guess I'd move council acknowledges the first step in the process is to have council, along with senior administration, participate in an education session, propose as a medicine walk and facilitated by the consultant in order to obtain meaningful insight into the value and meaning behind the practice of traditional land acknowledgement statements. Now, I pretty much just summed that up in my, in my close for the first motion, but I think it's also important that we as a council acknowledge that uh, uh, some of us may not be comfortable with doing traditional things, so it's just uh, looking for the support of council to approve this and uh, hopefully we'll get a unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Any other discussion or debate? I'll just say that I would encourage council support for this motion. I think the intent here is uh, not just to take symbolic actions by establishing a policy, but actually to make those actions meaningful by demonstrating that we first have a will to learn um, and then basing our actions on our, our increased knowledge. Uh, so really that the intent behind this is to ensure that any action that we take in this area is um, with intent um, and based on uh, increasing our own personal understanding. So it would encourage council to support the motion. Uh, again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson, anything else that you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Sure, I got a couple things. Uh, we did have a delegation from the Grand Prairie Public Library and the Peace Library System, uh, which came in and did a fabulous job of uh, describing how their symbiotic relationship works. Uh, so thank you to Deb Craterman and Linda Du Plessis for coming on in and also giving us that extra invite to go and celebrate the Grand Prairie Public Library's eightieth anniversary. That just happened this past week. I hope you all had a chance to go in there. Also from our Director Service area update, uh, we had uh, seven generations free public skate on Saturdays, uh, from one forty-five to two thirty is underway at the Dave Barr Center and has so far been a huge success. Uh, so if you're itching to get on some skates, uh, that's the time to go and just drop on down. Uh, they're more than welcome to be there. And they'll take you. And speaking of skating, uh, could be your last opportunity to see some living Olympic legends in our own fair city as Tessa Virtue and Scott Moore have announced their retirement from skating, but will still participate in Rock the Rink on October thirteenth at the Grand Prairie, or sorry, at the Evolution Place. Uh, finally, uh, Parks uh, Fall Projects are underway and are including repairs to ball diamond outfields, fertilization of sports fields and other green spaces, tree planting and tree pruning. And the leisure center was reopened uh, in September after having the turf sanitized and stretched over the summer. Uh, the pitch is being used for city recreational programming and is available for rent. And recently was rented out by uh, the local Grand Prairie Bunnock Group in their first annual bunnock tournament that was held on the weekend of September twenty-eighth. That is all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, Counselor O'Toole?
Do you know who won the bunnock event? Can you tell?
Counsel Thieson?
Mr. Thieson?
Yeah, it was a group of uh, five, so I guess uh, that uh, sorry, you, you're spoiling my surprise.
No, no, I want to know.
All right, all right, there's a group of five. I'll tell you, the bunnock tournament, that wasn't part of the uh, the report, but uh, there was uh, twelve teams that took place, fifty people, uh, and people came from as far away as Dawson Creek, uh, in their teams, uh, Mundare and Sherwood Park. Uh, the team that won consisted of uh, forty-four-year-old Brad Jarvis, seventy-four-year-old Marion De Jong, thirteen-year-old Jasper Maximathieson, seven-year-old Lennox Maximathieson, and their running alternate, forty-one-year-old Chris Thieson.
Congratulations. I knew it was coming. I know.
I am the champion. And it's sad that it would block out my face and I can see very clearly that my good luckiness is still beside this old horsebone there, so. Thanks for bringing that up, Counselor O'Toole.
There you go.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, so I think that handles all of our committee business and some items of other things. Um, we have no items of correspondence in with the council agenda. I guess I just would take the time to note that uh, all council members did receive uh, at the start of this meeting, letters from Habitat for Humanity, New Rock Developments, and Alberta Health Services, uh, Public Health, all with respect to the city of Grand Prairie Affordable Housing Strategy, all in support of that strategy. Uh, so we just acknowledge that uh, we didn't do that during the delegation because they weren't sort of here as a delegation, but would acknowledge that we did receive those. All council members received those endorsements of the strategy. Um, and with respect to delegation business, I think uh, all of the delegations were related to item eight point one one. So I'm not sure that there's anything to receive for information arising from that, since we did already direct that item to a council committee of the whole. Um, we have no notices of motion this evening. Yeah, council member reports.
Sorry, Mayor Given, point of order.
Yeah, sure. Counsel Bressi, did you have something further?
I believe we postponed um, a-
I believe we postponed item 7.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for that catch. Yes. We are ready for your amendments to the procedure by law. Sure, so I think we're on to second reading, I believe. So Counsel Bressi, any business arising on second reading?
Well, gee, I wonder how you knew I'd have lots of amendments. So let me know when you want me to potentially stop because somebody else wants to get in. But first of all, just a question for administration. I'm looking at item 6.2 where CLT has to approve an agenda at least a week before meetings. And I'm just for regular council meetings, and I'm wondering how that impacts... Usually coming out of committee, we add things to council agenda, and committee is less than a week before council. So how would that impact our current practice, item 6.2?
Sure. For the city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The item actually aligns with current practices and does allow for items from committee to be forwarded on to a council meeting accordingly. Specifically, this item addresses reports from administration that are presented to a council or committee meeting outside of recommended course from council.
Thank you. Well, if I may try an amendment, Mayor Given?
Sure.
So, and it's actually not going to be to that. I'm satisfied with that now. But zooming over to section 7.25, where we talk about the ability of members of the public to present to council. Within this bylaw, there's a requirement for members of the public to submit a completed delegation request form to Legislative Services no later than one week prior to the day of a committee meeting. I'd move that council amend that to one day prior to a committee meeting. And just to speak to this, I think that it should be easy to get before council and other committees. I think asking somebody to speak for a week out is a little bit burdensome, but especially concerning to me because a week out from a committee meeting, the public won't even know what's on that agenda. So essentially, we're saying if this stands as written, that you could come and raise new business at a committee meeting, but you can't actually come to a committee and talk about what that committee is going to be talking about, at least under our current practices. So I hope council supports this amendment.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that amendment? Counselor Palat?
Thanks, McVinn. I'm just kind of curious on how that would impact administration. If that's doable and how that would look.
Sure. I'll look to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The intent of the motion is to support having delegations attend a council meeting, and that's something that council would absolutely support. With regard to logistics of creating an agenda, it would just mean that that delegation would not appear on the agenda.
Any other discussion or debate? I'll say that I support the amendment. I think in the past, we've had a relatively informal process for people willing, wishing to speak to committee. I think that this one day in advance is probably the right amount of formalization. And if we find that that works well, then maybe we could do more, needs to be tightened up, we could do that. But I think before going to a requirement for somebody to have a thought that they want to present without seeing the agenda, that this one day is the right amount of formalization. So certainly support the amendment. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Bressi?
Yeah, thank you. And then moving down to item 7.27, it's a similar clause but talking about regular council meetings. And again, there's a one-week prior requirement. And for this one, I would move that we change it to three hours prior. The idea being, I think that if you tell us in the morning that you want to come to council, I think that that's appropriate. And maybe we'll have debate, maybe somebody wants to move an amendment, and maybe three hours is too aggressive for council to update. I don't know. I'm comfortable with three hours. Maybe we want to make it a day, maybe we want to make it three days, but I'm moving three hours. And I just think a week is way too long. I think it's way too long to say schedule one week. Again, usually our committee business concludes six days before a council meeting. So this would give somebody no ability to come talk to us in the evening between when committee meets and when council meets.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Open for discussion or debate on that amendment, Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I don't know if we've adopted the friendly amendment thing yet here, so I'll just make a comment that I like to see the line with the one day. I just think if administration's going to do work, I think there's consistency in that message that we're kind of open for business one day in advance. But I do think there's some three hours if we start at nine o'clock. They'd have had to let us know the day before anyway, so or else they'd be a walk-on. So I kind of would like to see it be a one day. So I couldn't support it as that, but if it was a one day, I could support that.
Thanks, Counsel Palat. Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, I just note that this talk about regular council meetings, which right now are scheduled for three o'clock, although who knows, maybe we'll change that, but one day before would put it on either a Sunday or a holiday. So you probably have to make it three days in advance or one business day in advance. But I was like that the spirit of my amendment is three hours, so I don't think I'm open to a friendly amendment on this. But if somebody else wants to move an amendment, I mean, that's your right, but I'm not going to make a friendly amendment to this.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. I'll say that I won't be supporting this amendment. I think that we've created an additional opportunity for people to speak to council. They can speak unannounced by, as the people did today, showing up during working hours, which is unfortunate that it is during working hours, but there is that opportunity to speak either informally, unannounced, by showing up on the day. Or if you know in advance that you wish to speak, which there's a lot of special purposes why people would do that. You have something that you're trying to promote, something that you're trying to inform council of. Those are the types of things that I think should probably be on the agenda. And in order for them to be on the agenda, you'd need to have that in advance. Administration could do that. It could be printed out for councils to know, council members to know that it's there, and for the public to know that those delegations are happening. So I am comfortable with the one week because we also have that informal opportunity for people to come at the three o'clock time, as we saw today. So I won't be supporting the amendment. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I don't support the amendment. However, I'd be prepared to make another amendment. My concern with the motion as it sits, or sorry, as the bylaws it sits, when the package comes out Thursday at noon, and you may have not been privy or up to date on the information that was discussed at committee level, you may not be aware of something that's important to your nonprofit organization, your, you know, your neighborhood association, something that's impacting your life. And if you find out Thursday afternoon when the package comes out, there's no opportunity for you to come if you work a traditional nine-to-five job. So I think that's really unfortunate. I also agree that administration, I support the intent that there needs to be some notice because, you know, with the format the way it is currently, we may not sit at six o'clock evening time. So I don't, do we amend an amendment? So I would encourage, I would prepare to see, and I'll make, depending on how this motion goes, I would prepare to see that if you give notice by four o'clock on the Friday prior to council, that you can show up as a delegation at the 6:00 PM session. If this motion fails, that would be my intent. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Open for, sorry, that was any other discussion or debate on Counselor Bressi's motion, which would amend to basically have people required to submit their sort of intent to attend the day of, three hours before the council meeting. Counsel O'Toole?
Yeah, Mayor Given, I'm not supportive of this. I think the fine line is too quick. And I would encourage to not support this as well. And when time comes, I would be supporting Counsel Clayton's motion if she makes it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue on this amendment. Counsel Bressi, do you wish to close?
Yeah, I hope I, I understand what's being told instead of giving administration notice. At the same time, I really think that the, there was no discussion about moving to, this is the first time we've ever discussed the actual idea of moving to, you have to fill out paperwork to come and present to council. And I really fundamentally don't like the idea. And I get on a pragmatic sense, we don't want to finish a meeting at 4:30 and be waiting here till six and nobody shows up. And so I get the idea of you need to give us a little bit of notice so we don't end up doing that. At the same time, I think the less barriers people have to be able to come speak to us personally, I think the better. I think it's a really great thing, a great practice of council, that somebody doesn't have to take time off work and they can just show up and talk to us. I think that's a unique thing about Grand Prairie. I think that's a special thing about Grand Prairie. So I'd encourage council to vote in favor of this amendment.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. That was the close, so I will call for the vote on Counsel Bressi's motion, which would amend this section to identify that rather than one week in advance of the desire to attend, that that would be three hours prior to the start of the council meeting. Please vote. Thank you. Counselor Clayton wishes to call for a revote. Okay, okay, so Counsel Clayton has requested a revote. Counselor Clayton has requested a revote, so we will call for the vote again. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry on a tied vote. Counsel Clayton, you said you might have a...
I echo some of the sentiment that Counsel Bressi had in regards to the access to, for the public to come to council meetings. And I appreciate, you know, your intent there. However, other municipalities have an understanding of when you need to give notice if you're going to go to council. I think it's fair that people come to council as they want. However, notice be given to support administration's workload, to prepare council for who may be potentially coming to council for discussion. So I'd move that the amendment be to the Friday noon prior to the council meeting. So that you must give written notice Friday noon prior to council.
Thanks very much. Counsel Clayton, any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Palat?
Just kind of, so if the Friday before was a holiday, would it revert to the Thursday? Or are we saying one business day before, just for clarity, just because we could have Fridays that are holidays? But this is about people.
Counsel Clayton?
I ask for some input from administration regards to how that would look.
Sure. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we perform final review of agenda on Thursday morning at CLT. And pretty much the go-ahead for publication for council occurs at noon on Thursday. Correct, Arlene? So ideally, if we establish that as the cutoff, you will have, when you receive your packages on Thursday afternoon, you will have as part of the agenda package, any scheduled delegation that will appear on the following Monday. So ideally, it would be Thursday noon, the cutoff.
Yeah, so that's not the intent of my motion. So I guess the question being for Legislative Services, if the email or the documentation is received by Friday noon, and I'll be at Friday a holiday, council may not get noticed till Monday morning that, you know, there's a delegation coming. So I'm comfortable with that. If Friday was a statutory holiday, Monday morning, administration should be able to forward out the information that there was a delegation that notified council, or sorry, the city that they want to come. You may not have the whole weekend to process that, but it rarely seems to happen that a statutory holiday is on a Friday. So I'd be comfortable with leaving my motion as is at Friday noon.
It's your motion. You can certainly do that. Counselor Palat, do you have a, on this? So see Counselor Clayton's motion to reflect that the submissions that the submissions be Friday at noon preceding a council meeting? Counsel Friesen?
Thank you. I won't support this motion. I'm really with Counsel Bressi on this. We need to be accessible. And what's, I don't understand that there's really any difference between finding out at, you know, on Monday morning or Monday at 3:00 PM that there is a delegation coming in the evening session. I don't think it, we're prepared for any delegation to come forward anyway at 3:00 PM. What would the difference be that we have an unannounced delegation at 6:00 PM in terms of us being prepared for it? As a council, we are prepared for unannounced delegations anyway, whether they come at three or at six. It makes no difference to me. I do, did like Counsel Bressi's idea of having them let us know by 3:00 PM that they are coming, but only so we know whether to come back that evening or not. So I'm not in favor of increasing the amount of time that's needed from Counsel Bressi. So I won't support this motion.
Thanks, Counsel Friesen. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll speak in favor of Counsel Bressi's failed motion as well. I thought it was, it's actually more accessible and really we're talking about time semantics here. So a Friday before the Monday, to me, doesn't make a big deal. A lot of people don't even open up their council packages from the general public until some point on the weekend if they're going to see what's going on. At that point, they're already too late to come and speak against or speak towards anything that may be coming up on that council agenda. That's why I was supportive of Counsel Bressi's. I think it was, made it more accessible to our community as well as this change of this council format. I think if we set up extra roadblocks to our community, we should also be willing to, you know, unlock the door for them every once in a while. And so for those reasons, I support the need to request a delegation to speak on any topic. But I think our general public also needs to be aware of what is coming on our agenda. And that doesn't always happen the day of the agenda release or the day after. So to be able to format an email, fill out a form, and know all the procedures to get in to see council is quite a bunch of hoops that they got to jump through in a short amount of time, so I won't support this motion.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counselor Clayton, I'll come back to you to close. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting it as I supported Counsel Bressi's because I think it's still, to me, is better than the objective that's in here that's saying one week prior. I think one day is better than one week. I think three hours was better than one day. But anyways, we're at one day, so I will be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Counsel Palat. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Counsel Clayton, do you care to close?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I encourage council to support this motion. My concern, not necessarily being what us as council is prepared for from a delegation, it's more the concern of the preparation for administration. For example, if a delegation came that a specific administrator needed to be in the room, and they find out at three o'clock that day, I don't think it's realistic or fair to expect that administration get an hour's notice by the end of the workday to say, there's a delegation coming at six o'clock today, or they may not even know. And the delegation shows up, and it's not fair to the delegation to not be provided with the information that they're looking for, which in turn creates a longer process because we need to make a motion to send it back to administration to follow up on. And so it's only fair, in my opinion, that we give the proper notice for the correct administration to be in the room in regards to the delegation that is coming. Friday noon is a reasonable amount of time for administration to find out who's going to be in the room, prepare for that discussion, and get the delegation the information that they're looking for in a timely manner. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton, for that close. We'll call for the vote on Counsel Clayton's motion, which would be to see the request to speak required to be submitted. I'm sorry, Counsel Clayton, what time did you say again for? Friday noon. Thank you. Okay, so the Friday noon preceding a council meeting. I will call for the vote. Please vote on Counsel Clayton's amendment. Thank you. That motion does carry. Were there any other amendments or business arising on the procedure by law? Counsel Bressi?
And I'm wondering if anybody else is going to get in on this, but I'm happy to keep on going. So looking at 7.27, I'm going to move another amendment to that. And that is to add a provision that if any scheduled delegation speaks at the evening session, then other members of the public wishing to address council on a similar topic may do so. And just the idea of this, usually when people are scheduled to come speak to us, there's often a group of them. And I think it's really goofy to say, hey, only the people that actually filled out a form can speak. I think a lot of people come expecting that they'll get to address us. And just there's been times where I felt bad telling those people, you can't speak to us even though you came here for this topic. So I understand why you don't want to just have open comment on absolutely any topic at six. I disagree with that, but I understand that. But I really think that if we're already talking about a topic during open delegation or during scheduled delegation, that other members of the public should be allowed to weigh in.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on that motion? Not seeing anyone in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on Counsel Bressi's amendment. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any other amendments or amendments on the procedure by law? Counsel Bressi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. So now going to item 11.6. People, a minute, scroll there if they care to. Item 11.6, this gives all members may attend any meeting of any standing committee or council committee and participate in debate, but must not make motions or votes. I'd move that we add in, all members have the right to have an agenda item added to all standing committee meetings. This is a practice of council right now, that you have the right as a member of council to ask any committee to talk about a topic. I think that's a very important right we have, and in this council, we've been somewhat informal in terms of, I don't think on this council, if we didn't have that specific right in the bylaw, we'd still be fine. But part of our job with this bylaw that hasn't been touched in the last 25 years, and may not be touched in the next 25 years, is to make sure it works for any council, no matter how they operate. So I think that's an important right, that you can bring up anything you want to standing committees, and I don't see that anywhere else in our new procedure by law. Looking at our old procedure by law, there was something called an administrative inquiry that you could use to ram something to an agenda at any standing committee if you want. So you have that ability to ram something in the previous one, but you don't have that ability here, and I think that's an important right.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. So that amendment is specific, an amendment to item 11.6. Any discussion or debate on that amendment? Not seeing anybody in the queue. I'll say I support the motion. I think it makes explicit the practice that we've had. We have, from time to time, had the ability for council members to make motions to add things to committee agendas. We have also done that informally. I think I've referred many members of council just to say, hey, if you have a simple email to the director and the chair, just to let them know that it's coming, and to Legislative Services or the city clerk. But I think that this establishes that as a practice that if council wished to change, it'd have to be intentional about that. And I think council members should support this, because it actually ensures that that ability doesn't just rely on the goodwill of the mayor and that sort of informal direction. It actually is spelled out in the procedure by law, and so if any council wanted to remove that, they'd have to be really intentional about taking it out. Anybody else, before I go to Counselor Bressi, to close on this item, or is this for a subsequent item? To close, Counselor Bressi?
Actually, I'm hoping to make a friendly amendment, which technically isn't allowed right now, and I realized that I forgot an important part of that motion, and that is to say how a council member can add something to the agenda. And I'm hoping the motion can read, they have the right to add something to the agenda by notifying the city clerk at least one week prior. The idea is, you don't necessarily have the right to just show up and say, "We're talking about this." It'll show up on the agenda, other councils can speak about it. I think that's an important part of the motion, so I'm hoping you'll allow that.
Yeah. If that was part of your original intent, I think it would be important, certainly the current practice has been, to ensure that it's with enough time for it to be on the written agenda, so that other council members know that that item's coming up for discussion. And a part of that process is for the city clerk to be aware, so that they can include it in the agenda. So if council is okay with Counselor Bressi ensuring that he captured his motion fully, is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Looking for one more, council, make sure your vote's stuck. Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any other items of business on this? Counselor Bressi?
Yes, thank you for your patience with me. I'd ask council to look at item 8.2, or yeah, section 8.2.
Now, wait a minute, you can't go backwards.
I don't know how long I get you guys' patience for, so I'm going in order of importance to me.
Go ahead, Counselor Bressi.
So item 8.2 talks about pecuniary interests, and section D says that if you declare a pecuniary interest, that you need to leave the room in which the meeting is being held until discussion voted on the matter concluded. And I just point out that the MGA actually gives us the right to go and sit in the public gallery and interact with council in the way that any other elector or owner or taxpayer would be able to, would be able to access council. And so I think that we're being more restrictive in this bylaw than the MGA actually is, and I think they should be in alignment. So I'm looking to Mayor Given, if you'd like me to suggest, I'd like to add item 8.2E to give councils the right to enter the gallery and interact with councils that other taxpayer would be, and I've got specific wording, if you'd like me to give specific wording, or else we could leave it to get worded properly after, if you want me just to move an intent.
Well, I will actually just first look to the city clerk, just to confirm, so that there's a section of the MGA that's listed here. How does this conform to the Municipal Government Act?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The item under 8.2, with regard to pecuniary or conflict of interest, is stated in our procedure by law, right from the Municipal Government Act. I am not sure of Counselor Bressi's reference to council member being able to sit in a gallery.
Counselor Bressi?
So that's in the Municipal Government Act 172.3, says, "If the matter with respect to which the counselor has a pecuniary interest is a question on which, under this act or another enactment, the counselor, as a taxpayer, an elector, or an owner, has a right to be heard by council. It is not necessary for the counselor to leave the room, and the counselor may exercise a right to be heard in the same manner as a person who is not a counselor."
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. So would your intent be to add that, then, to the 8.2 as E?
Yeah, that's right, just to make our procedure by law read the same as the MGA.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much. So council, you heard Counselor Bressi recite the specific section of the act, which provides that provision for somebody to attend. I would also note that this, there's a crossover here with our council code of conduct, which talks about perceived conflict of interest. And so I guess I would, I would support Counselor Bressi's amendment, so that we're conforming with what it says in the Municipal Government Act. I would advise the council members think very carefully about using that opportunity, because I think it could lead to the perception of conflict of interest. But for the purposes of staying in alignment with the act, I think that that's a reasonable amendment. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on Counselor Bressi's amendment, which would add an 8.2E, as he described there, allowing for the opportunity for a member of council to return to discussion as an elector or taxpayer, as provided for under the Municipal Government Act. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. I just got a couple more. So looking at just above that, in section, this question for administration, probably not a motion, but look at the section above, it says, "A member does not have a pecuniary interest by reason only of any interest set out in the act." And that's just reading funny to me. Is that, is that correct, or does it say a member, is it supposed to read, "A member does not have a pecuniary interest"? It's supposed to read, "A member only has a pecuniary interest."
Sure. Thanks very much for the question. Sure. Under 8.1, the first sentence of 8.1, we'll look to the city clerk for a description maybe of the intent, or...
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. Again, this is a section that's taken straight out of the Municipal Government Act regarding pecuniary interest, and it is clearly stated, as it is in the MGA, that a member does not have a pecuniary interest by reason only of any interest as set out in the act. And then the act goes on into several sections that outline, excuse me, what does constitute a pecuniary interest.
So this is the same wording that's contained in the Municipal Government Act? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Counselor Bressi?
Right. It's formatted differently in the act, and that's why my brain's hiccuping on there. So thank you for answering that. I think that the last thing, the last thing I've got, and I don't know if this needs a motion of council or not, but it's talking about, one of the things that this establishes is the way that our committee business works, and we've had the experiment of putting all of our committee business in one morning, and I've got thoughts both for and against that, but I think my biggest concern about the way we're doing committee business right now is, we saw that Community Living last week, we had a library delegation, came at 9:00 in the morning, didn't end up speaking till almost noon, and that's happened a number of times, where the public wants to speak to us and can't for a long time. And I think that's something that if we're going to keep this format, needs to be fixed. An idea I've had to fix that, and maybe there's other ideas out there, but an idea I've had to fix that is if we started standing committees with a committee of the whole meeting, and the only order of business on that was delegations, and delegations of addressing any matter of council could be added to that, and in that way, they don't have to wait for the specific standing committee, or maybe there's other solutions out there. But I think if we're going to approve, and if we're going to go forward next week with our organizational meeting, saying all committees are happening the same morning, that's something we really need to solve. It's just not respectful to members of the public to ask them to come and wait for hours, especially since we can't give them a good estimate of when committees are going to be done. So I don't know if I need a motion for that, or if that's an idea, but I'm just looking for council's thoughts on that.
I would, I see Counselor Clayton in the queue. I would say that if there's an issue that council's identifying that isn't necessarily resolved in the procedure by law as it stands today, we don't have to leave this for 25 years. Like honestly, if we come up with something that's better on reflection, rather than in the moment, we could simply have a motion to amend the procedure by law at some other council meeting. It's maybe a little bit more cumbersome, and it's always nice to get everything done all at once, but there's no reason that we couldn't give that a little bit of thought, have a little bit of discussion with administration, and come back with a well-thought-out sort of approach or solution to that. You know, so my advice would be, if there's some hesitancy about that, or if we want, that's a challenge that we want to solve, and I agree that it is, hasn't worked particularly well so far, then maybe what we should be doing is giving it a little bit of thought and coming back with a well-thought-out solution, rather than trying to do an off-the-fly, off-the-cuff amendment to the procedure by law. Procedure by law's got lots of stuff in it. Let's adopt all that stuff, and let's continue to revise on an ongoing basis, rather than putting it on a set it and forget it, and trying to get it all right in the first instance. So that would be my advice. I see Counselor Clayton in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. You have similar comments, or I think there's a couple other things in the process of our meetings, and particularly committee meetings. Currently, there's time indications on the schedule, they're obviously very loose noted times. On the other hand, they're not necessarily fair to delegations if they're choosing to come, or committees, especially Community Living, that are part of the agenda and present. And so, but I agree, that's not really something I think we're going to solve in a bylaw process. So I appreciate your comments here, but I think it's something internally, through communication, potentially, we could solve.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I will say, one item that I was wondering about, as administration sent this out last week, and if there was a council member that wished to make a motion of this effect, it's about the order of the committees. Right now, I think my understanding from administration is that they would default to presenting the committees in the order that they're listed in the procedure by law, which is currently alphabetical. I think recognizing that the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee will deal with development permit issues, which is where we often have delegations that attend to deal with their permit issue, would make sense to me that that always be the first committee. That doesn't deal with the issue of when the subsequent committees fall, but it means that the one committee that we know has a function, that will often have members of the public attend for specific business, should always be first. That would make sense to me, rather than just an alphabetical, which I think it currently starts with Corporate Services? Yeah, Corporate Services Committee. So I think if we put Infrastructure and Economic Development, Community Services, sorry, Community Services. Yeah. So if, you know, the motion that I'd be looking for is to amend that order to reflect Infrastructure and Economic Development as the first committee of the day. Counselor Clayton?
I'm prepared to make the motion, as stated, so that the order of committees being Infrastructure and Economic Development, followed by Community Services, because that would be the other committee that potentially has delegations that present. So if we went to that order, subsequently, the other two as noted. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess it's somewhat to this one, because we, I appreciate switching the order, but sometimes because we're switching the order, IPS could go two or three hours, or this one could go two or three hours. I guess what I'm wondering, this may be more of a question for administration, because it has happened a few times, what do we do in the absence of all four of these, and if all four of them end up running late? And I guess what's happened a couple times, we've had a couple run late, and we're watching our staff sit through lunch, not take a pee break, you know, kind of like, I'm just wondering how administration's going to, you know, we might get through all four of those committees in two hours, or we might be here six hours. I'm just wondering what the thought is on what if it goes long, and are we going to schedule in a break, and we're going to ask people to come back? I really like the intent of getting it all together. I think it's great. I just think there's the misses of how we get the scheduling figured out, and what we do in the, you know, for, I just, yeah. Administration maybe asked that one or answered that one.
Sure. Yeah, so I'll maybe look to the city clerk, and potentially to the city manager. I think that there's at least an element of agenda management and load management that administration can undertake when they're looking at committee agendas, and make some decisions about what the relative load is, and whether items could be deferred to a subsequent council meeting or committee meeting. I see both are ready to go, and maybe I'll default to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is, we have been trying to estimate times during this pilot time, which is very unpredictable is sometimes the discussion time, which is needed, and that's purely up to council members. We can see if we will pass lunch, then to probably incorporate a break for lunch, and continue after lunch, which we'll have to manage the Tuesday afternoons or after lunch in our calendars accordingly. So probably it's a little bit of a trial and error. We can, I think we have been tracking duration, Arlene, of the meetings so far, so we can see how many instances as part of this combined committee system went through lunch and passed that, to see, you know, if it's a rare occurrence, or if more frequent event. I don't remember how many times we went past lunch, but it's not the norm, I would say. It's not the norm, but yeah. I mean, this is, we need to adjust that a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor Given. It is also the, at the purview of committee meeting, that the chair can ask its committee to adjust an agenda. So there is the agenda management side of a committee meeting as well. So if you feel there is an opportunity where your meeting will go longer than your committee anticipates, then it is at the right of that assembly to postpone items to a future committee meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. And then we'll go to the Community Services Director. Counselor Palat?
I guess on that, what I'm wondering is maybe if we should have one outstanding items list broken into those four buckets. And the reason I'm saying that is some of the times, things get put on an outside of item lists, you might not be on that committee personally, and then you're wondering, somebody's, this one's going to get deferred back? And maybe more of a, I guess, a group effort on that, is when things go on the oil, that we're almost setting administration up of when those are going to happen. I also speak of it the other way, is I think there's frustration sometimes, and somebody goes, "Oh, wow, that's taken you guys six weeks to do, because I thought it should be a one-week thing." And I'd hate to see that get to where we get, to where it's finally going to show up on a committee meeting and go, "Oh, today's not the day for that, because we need to manage our time better. We're going to punt that two more weeks." So, you know, I'll just throw it out more for a comment, but I think, you know, maybe some management of how we do the outside of items list, collective approach could be a little bit better, because I don't know, we're not on all the committees, so we don't maybe sometimes understand that one outside of items list might be really piled up, and might need to have a more agenda time to get through it, and that may impact some of the things that go on the other outside of items.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that we have been trying to notify delegations at the start time, so if Community Living is 10:30, we let them know you don't have to show up before that time. We may have missed it with the last meeting. And also wanted to mention, we did offer to the delegation at the last meeting that we'll reschedule for a future meeting if they didn't, because it was going on longer than we anticipated, but they chose to just remain and present last week, so.
Okay. Okay. So right now, we have Counselor Clayton's motion on the floor, which was to reflect the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee as being the first of the day. Is there any other discussion or debate on that motion? Sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you, followed by Community Services. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Were there any other items that any council member wished to amend in the procedure by law? Counselor Bressi? That motion carries. Were there any other items that any council member wished to amend in the procedure by law? Councillor Bressi?
I'm just, I'm just curious, well, it's something that we haven't, that we haven't talked about was the movement to council being in the afternoon and in the evening and splitting it like that instead of having it at six. And I'm just, I'm just curious how that's working for, working for other people. I know that it hasn't necessarily been working great for me from a balancing other professional commitments and balancing other family, family commitments, which is always concerning when it's a part-time job, but at the same time I'm just one guy on council and I'm curious how it's been working for other people.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Yeah, so recognizing that the procedure by law came direct to council and not through standing committee, we didn't have as much opportunity for dialogue and discussion on the specifics of it. And so appreciate that there's not a specific amendment at this stage. A little discussion could lead to that. So questioned other council members. Councillor Palat?
I, I guess thanks Mayor Given. I think for me at first when this happened, I was, let's, let's give it a try. I wanted to support administration on it. And it, it was a change. Having said that, it's, it's worked on my schedule and I'm, I'm fine with the change. I, what I see is I, I like that administration has the ability to sometimes be out of here by five o'clock where if we start at six, we're asking them to be here till eight or nine or 10 o'clock some nights. And so I think for me, I can appreciate this as a change on all of our lifestyles somewhat. Maybe you're not picking your kids up from school, you're talking them in a bed sort of a thing, but I, I think this is working better for administration and I guess, not to put words there most, my, my question is to see. I'll, I'll leave it at that because administration's already recommending it or else they wouldn't think this should be here. So I'll just leave it at that, but that's my two bits. I think we should be respectful to administration's time on this as well.
Thanks councillor Palat. Councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much. My comments basically that I know that Tuesdays are my day that I'm gonna be concentrating on council stuff. I can write that in my agenda and it's dealt with. And we did get voted on to council to make sure that we do a good job and that's a priority in my life. And I think that's one of those things that I look forward to is making sure that I'm available on Tuesdays. I'm a little bit different situation that Mr. Bressi is in. My family's growing up, but in the end, I think it works best for me the way it is now. And if I have the opportunity to attend other committee meetings that I'm not appointed to, that option is there. So it works great for me.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion? I'll say that I'm, I continue to be supportive of the change. I think it's actually worked out relatively well on a personal level. I think it will for future councils, knowing what it is, they'll be able to sort of structure their council commitment around that, like understanding what the system looks like. I think that it's worked relatively well. And again, I'm not particularly concerned about if at some point we wish to change it, we can. And if a future council wishes to change it, certainly they can as well. And so I'm comfortable with how it is. Okay. I don't, so is there any other discussion or any other items arising? If there are none, then we had a number of amendments. Sure, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have been informed that there is one more small minor housekeeping amendment to make to the procedure by law before you pass it. And it's under item 1.10, that is the definition of the corporate leadership team. I failed to include the city manager in that definition, so I would like to make a friendly amendment.
Talk, talk about a career limiting move, eh? Exclude the city manager from CLT. Is there a council member that would wish to make that amendment to incorporate that change? Councillor Bressi?
I have no idea what the record is for most amendments on a single bylaw reading, but I am going for that record, so I would love to so move.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on that amendment? Seeing none, it looks like everybody is ready to vote on that idea. The city manager being part of the CLT. We'll see how it goes. Please vote. Congratulations to the welcome to the team. Then, if those are all the amendments, I believe those are amendments to second reading. Trying to remember where we were way back at the start of this. So then I will call for the vote on second reading as amended. Any discussion or debate on second reading as amended? Seeing none, call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Can I have a motion to have third and final reading? Motion to have third and final reading? Looking for just one of you. Councillor Bressi?
Sure, I would move that council have third and final reading at this meeting.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi. So this motion to have third and final reading, this must pass unanimously. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Bressi, would you care to make the motion for third and final reading?
Sure, I would move that council give third and final reading to this bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that should handle our piece of deferred business and take us to council member reports. And we'll go to councillor O'Toole for the combative sports commission. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On November 8th, XFFC will be having their 23rd event in Grand Prairie and it'll be at the Revolution Place. And I just wanted to give you a little background from when I went to the ABC conference, some of the things that we accomplished. And I also want to bring up the pursuit of excellence as well. So we had a, I personally sat down with the vice president of regulatory affairs with the UFC championship. He, prior to that was the executive director of Nevada State Athletic Commission. Our conversation lasted almost two hours and he heard about Grand Prairie. And this is a guy that travels all over the world hosting events. And when we talked, he wanted to know more about Grand Prairie. And I says, what do you want to know about Grand Prairie for? He says, well, you never know. We might be there. And so we don't promote any promoters to come to Grand Prairie, but in the event, it was interesting that he knew a lot about us. So with that, there's been a lot of people that have, a lot of athletes who gained direct success because of the combative sports in Grand Prairie. We've had Alex Martinez. He's fought three times in Grand Prairie, went out to try for UFC and is currently fighting for Brave FC in Europe. This last weekend, he won in, in Abu Dhabi on the weekend to remain the undefeated professional that he is. And he got funding at an earlier age in life through the pursuit of excellence. Spencer Jebb, another pursuit of excellent recipient, fought three times in Grand Prairie, moved on to train with Georges St Pierre at TriStar Gym in Montreal. And he fights with the M1 Global in Russia, winning his last bout. We brought in Jaren Valer, main trainer for the ABC officials, both referee and judge. He's worked in Grand Prairie and was overwhelmingly impressed with the organization and remains close to, as a close resource to our commission. And for any needs, you can ask him for his perspective and situations as well. He's became a bit of a close friend, but he's one of the main dudes, you want to call him that, with the ABC. Several athletes have competed here in Grand Prairie. We've had 25 events since 2011. There's been no major injuries, severe medical conditions caught in pre-fight process. So we've had to cancel fights because the paperwork wasn't completed. And as research went on, we found out that some people were having life altering diseases or issues with their body. And one person, because of our influence in his life at that point in time, required heart surgery. So the medical exams that we perform or have get performed are very important to the athletes. Commission is more than just fighting. It's relationships, safety, business, and most of all, the respect of, in every aspect is mentioned. Grand Prairie has seen 250 fights with no incidents. And yeah, I just wanted to let you know that the commission is strong, well-liked, great respect throughout the combative sports commission or competitive sports world. And it was a pleasure walking in and having the guy from New York State Commission or the Calgary or the California State Commission welcome you into the hotel that the event is at and wanted to know what's going on. So we got a good, we got good stuff happening here.
Thank you councillor O'Toole. I don't believe there are any reports from our other external agencies, boards or commissions. Unless we missed one. And with that being the case, then we'll start council roundtable with councillor Thieson.
Oh, you guys want to be here all night, eh? Well, let's get my pretty face in there. There it is. All right, there we go. All right, I've had the luxury of being very, 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 very busy doing deputy mayor duties as well as AUMA conference. I have to say, the AUMA conference is really, really good, but a highlight for me was getting to sit with councillor Bressi with the honorable Minister of Environment Parks, Mr. Jason Nixon and his team from the province, as well as sitting in and around a table with the Mayor of Calgary, Nahad Nenshi, as well as one of the councillors, Ben Henderson, representing the city of Edmonton and FCM as well to discuss important issues. One of the highlights of that for me though was watching councillor Bressi in action, like really attacking the subjects whenever he had an opportunity. And I got my own two, two words in there here and there as well, but councillor Bressi was very, very impressive. And I was like a proud parent there, even though I'm not old enough to be his dad, that would be weird. But I was a proud parent watching him in action and even made Minister Nixon take note that, about his passion and and his love for our community and representing it well. So was happy to be in that room with you councillor Bressi. Thank you very much. From there, I came back to do some deputy mayor duties, but I got to be a part of several awesome events. I'm not gonna list them all off because I know there's other council members that were at some of these events as well and I think we should share. So I will say that I had the opportunity to emcee the fifth TEDx Grand Prairie event here in Grand Prairie that took place at the beautiful John Paul II Theater. Now, I've talked about TED before. We know our Leicester city manager has been a speaker. Councillor Eunice Friesen has been a speaker. Myself has been a speaker and the man who put together the Affordable Housing Strategy, Mr. Reed DeRoche was the originator, the original promoter of that. And it has carried on into its fifth installment. And I think I'm the only one left having emceeed four of them and spoken at one of them. So I feel pretty blessed. Now, there's a lot of really great speakers, but I have to be honest, I was really, really touched. There was, as an addition to the, to the TED event at the intermission, we had a performance art piece by Miss Serena Love, who did live on art stage. She was working on it behind the curtain before the intermission and we opened it up. Then her friend Kevin Shore wheeled his bike and all of his belongings onto the stage and sat down at a piano and started by playing Old Canada and then played Bach and Mozart and a bunch of other really classical composition pieces, which is really, really cool. But it's even cooler when you understand that Mr. Kevin Shore is one of our homeless population who lives in, in the wilderness. He also keeps all of his tools and his ladder and everything in there to help him do yard maintenance and work for businesses and individuals around the community. And was actually a really cool guy. So as the emcee, I had a small write-up for him. And so I asked him if it was okay. And then I just got to ask him a little bit more questions about his housing situation. And he said, well, he's been homeless now for about four months. He had housing, but unfortunately he got kicked out, invited the wrong friends over and they made a ruckus and he lost his housing and due to the lack of available spaces for people in his predicament, despite the fact that he's a hardworking man and quite the piano player, he couldn't find a place due to not enough services and not enough available spaces. Stuff that we're gonna be talking about here in a couple of weeks and that we've been talking about for years about what we need to do now. But it really, really touched me because I said, well, Kevin, you got none of these services. Like, how do you, how do you keep up? Living in the bush and playing the piano key ivories, because you can also see him at the farmer's market playing on the piano there. You can see him at She Will Studios downtown. He plays there quite consistently. And he said, you know, it's pretty bad that I live in the bush, I guess, some people might think. But I don't let that get me down. Every morning I take a breath and I thank God for that breath. Because life is a gift and I'm thankful for being here. And I'm thankful for being where I am because of course I have a house over my head and family and friends and have the opportunity to help make a difference in people's lives, hopefully sooner rather than later. So for him, as he said those words to me, I, I almost cried because it really touched my soul. And then when I read it again as an emcee to the audience, I almost cried again because it had such an impact. And I find myself here with water filling up my eyes. So maybe he really did get deep down into me. So to Kevin Shore, hopefully we will make the right decisions to help you find a place to utilize your talents and to find a warm place over your head. We'll do that sooner rather than later. But with that all being said, I do have one final bit. To say, never doubt the impact that you have on other people's lives, no matter how big or how small or how rich or how poor you are, because we all have the ability to impact each other in incredible ways. And that makes us all pretty blessed and fortunate. And speaking of being blessed and fortunate, I'm looking at this big trophy in front of me. I had to clean off my shelf to make room for it. You know, there just wasn't enough room on Chris Thieson's trophy shelf case on it. So I opened up some space to be a little bit thankful for the people in my life who surround me, my council family. And I thought, being at our organizational meeting next week and we're gonna do the old shuffle and the reseat, I figured it might be a great opportunity to present as a councillor, the first ever MVC councillor of the year award to one of my fellow council mates. Now, the councillor of the year award?
Councillor, councillor Thieson, this is an opportunity to describe events that council members have attended representing the city of Grand Prairie. I appreciate the good nature and the spirit of the direction that you're going. But we are here to report on things where we represent the city of Grand Prairie and our council colleagues out in the community.
For sure. And that's what I'm here to say, Mayor Given. So I would appreciate the time that you've given me. So in speaking to my council mates, I would like to award an award. I think we're all deserving of an award. But for one councillor, and it was pretty close. I looked at everybody on the council and it was actually separated by about point three of a percentage between first and second. So I have our councillor of the year. This councillor always participates in conversations at meetings, sometimes proposes amendments that I sometimes don't support, is a dependable person who represents her community well in all the things that they do, both local and abroad. Is genuine, kind, intelligent and thoughtful. And if there's something happening in or around the community, chances are this person is there. So in light of time, I will just put the trophy up here and I'll present it later to the most valuable councillor of the year. It was close. The councillor Kevin O'Toole, because you do so many good things in our community, I will give you my little award. And the runner up actually was councillor Dylan Bressi. You get the most enthusiastic councillor of the year award and I'll present those to you later. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Thieson. Councillor Palat?
Well, I was gonna go long today, but I'm not thinking I'm gonna go that long in my presentation, but that was pretty heartfelt and pretty cool. So thanks for that councillor Thieson. I had, I guess we all had AMA, so I want to thank the councillors that had the opportunity to go down on a road trip. That was very memorable and I'm sure we'll always have some stories for, for friends and family for years to come from that one. The highlights of one of the events I did that was actually the Aqua Terra plant tour that I did with councillor Bressi and councillor O'Toole. It just made me a lot more confident that, that Aqua Terra is, I always thought that he'd do a great job, but I'm a lot more confident now that we're set up as a community for now and for a long time. And councillor Bressi had made a comment there that he talked to a mayor out of hint and then said, boy, I don't think about water anymore. And it's, it's not something I'd thought about until councillor Bressi said that. It's something as big as water. We've never had to really discuss it as a council in two years. And so I'm pretty grateful for that. So I, I think we're in, we're in great shape for them moving forward. The other thing that I thought was really cool is I had my opportunity to have a phone call with Tracy Lawrence and that we all probably had. And it was something that council undertook where we did a peer review of each other. And at the end of the call, I asked Tracy if that's something that's very common and she said, no, not at all. And I, and it made me very proud of our group. I know with it, sometimes we bang heads here and we don't agree. Today, today was a tough one. But I love that we're in a spot that we comfortable enough and confident enough with each other that we can say what, hey, what I like about you and here's something I think you'd like to improve. And I, and I'm, I'm really grateful. And I'm really grateful that we had that opportunity with Tracy, and I think that's something that we should be proud of as a council, because that's not something a lot of councils have. So, you know, I want to take a moment to reflect that. And at that, I don't have any words, so I'll let it go here.
Councillor Plott? Councillor Friesen?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I've had among the best two weeks of my council experience, and I don't know where to begin. I usually pick one thing that hasn't previously been commented on, but I can't decide on. I got to, again, help out with Tiny Hands of Hope, the Walk to Remember. I want to shout out to Alberta, the province of Alberta, for Alberta Culture Days. This year, I got to try my hand at papermaking. I won't be trying again. I have other talents. I attended a check presentation. Thank you Rotary Club of Grand Prairie for your continued commitment to some of the initiatives that are important to city council as well. I got to attend Joy Chapel this past week and just had a blast visiting with persons with developmental disabilities who meet on a Thursday night, sometimes 150 or 200 of them, for dinner and church. It's fantastic. I attended the unveiling of the Sisters in Spirit Memorial Walk and Memorial Rock prior to the annual memorial walk. And it's a beautiful depiction of a jingle dancer and an inscription reminding us of our missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and two-spirited individuals. And the Volunteer Services Bureau is 50 years old in our community, and I got to plant a tree that didn't blow away, and neither did I, much to my surprise. It was, oh, and Friends of Grand Spirit Foundation Harvest Dinner. It just was really a fantastic couple of weeks. Thanks.
Councillor Friesen? Councillor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. AUMA was very interesting. We had lots to meet and greet, and it was a good part of it. New government brought quite a few MLAs and ministers to meet, and thanks to Shane. And it was a great introduction, but we're still feeling like to have worked with them more harder. Besides that, we went to the grand opening for Windsor Ford, and it was $35 million building and 134 bays for service. It was a great event, and Mayor had a good speech there, and proud to be in Grand Prairie, that's the third generation they're carrying on the business. And then we went to the GP, our library 80th year anniversary. I call it anniversary or birthday? Yeah, I don't know. So it was very good, there were quite a few people were there. And then also the thanks to the Mayor Bill Given again for the $1 million Rotro and Rotary Club gave the money. That was a great event. That's about it, I have, thank you.
Councillor Minhaus?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Most of the items have been mentioned. I will just mention a couple other little ones. I attended parts of the Rotary Conference that was held at Evergreen Park, the Rotary District Conference highlighted some exceptional speakers. It also had over 500 attendees. It was one of the largest conferences put on in the district. So special thanks to the organizers and the Rotary Clubs and the Rotarians that supported that event. It was, the parts I attended were great. As well, I attended the opening reception for Archives at Work that was put on, hosted at the Grand Prairie Museum, put on by the Archives Society. Hard-working group of people, very passionate about the work they do, and so that was nice to see that group. And then on this last weekend, Saturday night, I think there was four events in Grand Prairie that evening. I was fortunate to attend the annual Nighthawk Comedy fundraiser, oversold, so packed event. So congratulations to the organizers for that event. As usual, the comedy is sometimes funny and sometimes inappropriate, but overall, I think they, I don't know the numbers yet, but I think they did well. So congratulations to the organization for their efforts. Thanks.
Councillor Clayton? Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I too want to speak highly of the AUMA and the road trip going there and the road trip coming back. While we were down there, we got to meet, it was one of the, I think, one of the most attended by MLAs and ministers that I can recall, and they were all very much available to bend in ear. And not only just the one day, but on a number of days, so that was great. I attended on the 30th Culture Week, and there was a film festival, you might say, of locally-produced films at the GPLT. And one of the ones that was there was one that I supported by being part of, is Lost. And the other one that I want to bring up is Giant Wood, and it's the elevator story in Sexsmith. And if you get a chance to see that, I don't know if it's on any of the social media stuff, but very, very down-to-earth start with, Sexsmith had nine elevators at one time, and we're down to one. But it's very encouraging, because some of the people that worked in those elevators were interviewed, and kind of, it's history. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the 3D Hockey News Conference, where Darren Foley has been running this fundraiser for a number of years. I won't get into the details, but this year, he's invited Lanny McDonald and Paul Coffey, in case you're wondering, they're hockey players, really good hockey players, and also Rod McLean. And they'll be having an event here later this year. And also, just on the sadness side of things, attended the funeral for Roy Borsted. And when you talk about minor hockey and minor ball, he was the founding father, I would say, very, very well supportive of all those sports. Not only that, he was a businessman for a number of years in the city of Grand Prairie. And so, I worked with him on a couple of boards myself. So with all that, that is my report, sir.
Pressy?
Great, thank you. I'll, two that I'll share is, one, I got to, along with councillor Theeson, attend Orange Shirt Day. That event's always a privilege to attend, and also always a sobering one to attend. Part of what happens is you get to hear speakers who talk about the past impact of residential schools, the current impact of residential schools, and the future impact of residential schools. And this year, we heard from one individual who went to residential schools and watched in front of her eyes classmates get beaten, watch have classmates disappear, and wonder what happened to those classmates, and then a couple decades later, find out that bones of other children are found at her school. And heartbreaking story to hear, we heard from another speaker who had cousins that were her age and younger taken off to residential school. She was saved, but she watched cousins go and come back and be very changed by that. And I think that as we're talking, today, we talked a little bit about next steps with Lannick-Naldman, and that's an important part of reconciliation. And Orange Shirt Day was a really important reminder that reconciliation isn't just about talking about what's happened in history, but what's happening in our community right now. So Orange Shirt Day, I don't know if it's, it's not a fun event, although the stew and the fellowship at the end of it is always great. It's a sobering event, but I think it's a very valuable one that is worth checking out if you've never checked it out before. On a lighter note, I also got to attend the Air Cadets Wings Parade. This is Air Force tradition, where pilots are traditionally given their wings, and in air cadets, it's recognized for promotions and for trade certifications they've received. And I got to be the inspecting officer, so I got to go along with the CO and watch every uniform get nipped. And boy, it sure made me self-conscious about the suit I was wearing. And then I got to talk a little bit about air cadets and how I believe that they really do have a lot of the values of Grand Prairie in terms of they're young people that volunteer in their community, that have adult officers that care for them, they're disciplined, they work hard. It was a great privilege, and I thought the most interesting part about it was, our air cadets here have a drone program where they get to learn how to fly drones, and what's unique about that is that's not happening elsewhere in Canada, they're piloting that. And the way technology is going, I'll bet you, I'd be very surprised if in five, 10 years, that's not a nationwide, just a regular thing that you do at air cadets. And it's really cool that that's another example of how Grand Prairie is leading the way. So I was really proud of those young people, and I was really proud of their officers, so that was a great privilege to attend.
Thanks, councillor Pressy. I'll just report on a couple of items that other council members didn't participate in. So in addition to speaking at some of the other events that were mentioned, I had a conference call with Mayor Rebecca Alty from the city of Yellowknife, talked about issues of mutual concern, and where we may have an opportunity to collaborate together in the future. I participated in a radio interview for CBC's Radioactive Program with respect to housing in the community of Grand Prairie. I joined the Minister of Advanced Education on a tour of Grand Prairie Regional College to speak about the importance of the college and its transition to degree granting status to our community. I also had an opportunity to meet with some representatives from Mexico, mayor and chief municipal lawyer from a community in Mexico who are in Grand Prairie for the Rotary District Convention. They had a particular interest. Their community of 16,000 people does not currently have a fire service. They receive fire service from about 25 minutes away, and so they were in particularly interest in that. And so I want to thank the members of our Grand Prairie Fire Department for allowing us to come over and make an impromptu visit to Station 3. I have to admit, it's probably a little bit of showing off, considering it's the most impressive station that we have, but they certainly appreciated seeing the way that our department operates and the specialization approach that our department has taken. And so I want to thank administration staff for being able to line that up so we could host our visitors well. My congratulations to the entire Windsor Ford family and the Longmates for the opening of their new facilities, mentioned by councillor Minhaus, the largest Ford dealership in Canada in Grand Prairie, and certainly should be a source of pride for our entire community. When I mentioned that our retail market analysis saw that we have a region of just under 300,000, Charles Longmake got up to speak afterwards, and he said, "Well, jeez, if I wouldn't have known that, I would have made it bigger." Charles, I guess, you know, you missed your opportunity. But I think it speaks to the strength of our local entrepreneurs and the commitment they have to this community, and the fact that they have a lot of confidence in the future of Grand Prairie. I can appreciate that from time to time, it can be difficult to be confident in the future of our community and its growth. But I think a decision like that, to invest in the largest Ford dealership in Canada in Grand Prairie, doesn't come lightly, and it really speaks to tremendous confidence in the future of Grand Prairie and our region. And then finally, to close, I just wanted to also, I wasn't able to attend the funeral, but I also wanted to add, just on behalf of myself and maybe all of council, if I could, in the city of Grand Prairie, our condolences to the Borsted family. Obviously, Roy's brother was a former mayor of the city of Grand Prairie as well, Elmer. But Roy himself was a real true partner in the region, having sat on county council for a number of terms, and he was also the Reeve when the city of Grand Prairie, the town of Sexsmith, and the county of Grand Prairie formed, joined to form Aqua Terra. And so obviously, played an important role in the lives of people on a social aspect, in terms of sport, but on a structural aspect, in terms of his role in governance in the region, has, he took a hand in things that will have a lasting contribution to our region. And so obviously, our condolences go to the Borsted family and all those who knew Roy. And with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned.